Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. In the agenda, could you please move Helles in to eighteen point one? Is there any other additions? Okay, could I have someone to move the agenda, please? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried. So I would like to welcome, I don't know who I'm welcoming because I can't see, but I believe it's Blaine, right? Oh, I can see you out there.
Just this TV's not on.
So welcome, Blaine, and for your, to do your presentation to us on Medical First Response. Who else do we have?
Good evening, thanks for having us. We have two other folks from Alberta Health Services joining me for this presentation. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thanks, Rob. Kevin Henrichan, I'm an emergency physician in Calgary, and I'm an EMS medical director for the province for the areas of dispatch and communications, medical first response, and also special teams within EMS.
Welcome.
And good evening, everyone, and thanks for the invite. Rob Barone, and I'm the Associate Executive Director for the North Zone with Alberta Health Services, and I oversee ground ambulance operations for the North Zone.
Welcome, Rob. So I will introduce, can you see us?
We cannot.
Okay, so we'll introduce counsel to you. We have, on my left...
Counselor Anderson.
Counselor Lambert.
Counselor Welke.
Myself, Crystal McAtier.
Counselor Jessman.
Counselor Lebron.
Counselor Langford.
So thank you for being here tonight, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. And on the agenda, would you like us to go ahead, or do you have some other business?
No, you go ahead, please.
Okay, excellent. Well, we appreciate you inviting us to speak with you and for culminating us at the start of your agenda here. My portfolio includes the provincial program of Alberta Medical First Response, and it's a program we've had in place formally since 2015. And obviously, the activity that medical first responders, which are mostly fire departments in the province, helping EMS and the paramedics in the community is not new. It goes way back before 2015. But what's newer is the provincial framework that we support our partners with. So I've got this presentation, I'm going to share my screen here, and I'm hoping that it'll be able to display the points, but I'm not going to just read it. I'll, I can provide a copy of this after as well, if you would like. So my, what I was asked to speak to today is these points here. So I want to provide an update on the Medical First Responder Program in brief, appreciating that we've only got, you know, so much time in the agenda. I also want to have an opportunity to answer any questions and for my colleagues on the line from AHS to add anything else that they would like to at that point. So I'm going to speak about some things we have going on in the Medical First Responder Program, and specifically, a few things that would apply to high level. And I've also been asked to speak to about, you know, what supports there are for challenging patient situations, including scenarios where EMS response is longer than we would wish it to be. So, and I did put a note specifically on here that I want to make sure that I start and end this presentation and this information by expressing gratitude for the responders in high level, so the medical first responders with the fire department at that level, at that location. Obviously, being a remote community has its specific challenges, and the work that the fire responders do to assist EMS is invaluable, and I can't say that enough, so just want to take that opportunity. So I'm going to get into it here, and it's a lot of information, but I've really streamlined it quite a bit, just to concentrate on providing a little bit of context here, starting for those that are unaware of what medical first response is. Is, we worked with a bunch of stakeholders prior to 2015 on what a provincial MFR program needed to look like. And what we learned in that is that it has to be highly flexible for different communities to meet their needs. So what we ended up with was a means for an agency, usually a fire department, to put their hand up and say that they're willing to assist EMS with first response in the community. And by being an MFR partner, provides a framework for them to have an ongoing relationship with Alberta Health Services to define their response plan, you know, what type of events they want to assist on, and ensure that they have access to supports. So it's not a once and done, you know, we work quite closely with Chief Rodney Schmidt in high level and with an ongoing communications and making sure that we help them wherever we can. So across the province, there's quite a bit of diversity. Obviously, there's each group, you know, each fire department has a bit of a different response plan and unique considerations for their area, and some are, you know, have different levels of training, and we work with fire departments to understand all of those things. The non-contract agreement that we have with our MFR partners allows the agency and the municipality, folks like yourselves, to determine the level of activity that they would like to have in that area. And through that, we're able to function as a support system, which is ideally what we see ourselves as, we're not a regulatory body. And again, there's no, you know, major contract in place or anything like that. So when we look across the province, and we're going to zoom into high level on a few of these items here. We do have three hundred and fifteen partners enrolled in the province of Alberta, which is the majority of the fire departments in the province. We do administer a training and equipment fund annually to help with some of the needs there that are medical related. We have some support for training, things like first aid and advanced first aid with the Red Cross. We focus a lot on gathering medical first response patient care reports to capture the good work and patient care that's happening before EMS arrives. And in the past few years, high level submitted actually a hundred and sixty-one of those patient care reports. So they're very compliant with the number of events that they're participating in. And they really do serve as a model for other partners in the region operationally and for the relationship that they have with EMS. We also have the soft exchange of consumable supplies or, you know, getting their hands on disposable supplies that are used in patient care. We have free online learning and ConEd opportunities. We provide patient care guidelines that are guided by medical oversight, like folks with, like Dr. Henrichan on the line here. And we provide access to real-time interaction with a referral emergency physician for those challenging patient situations, and that includes situations where the EMS response is prolonged. And I'm going to get into that last one a little bit more in the coming slide here. So we do, of course, have some challenges and things that we need to continue to work on, and one of those is that medical first response is not actually available in every community. And we see an example of that with the response plan in the town of high level looking different than the Mackenzie County surrounding area. But that's, again, decided by administrations and the department, and we help make that happen. We are continuing to make sure we understand and are aware of the good work and critical interventions that are performed by medical first responders. We know that there's lots of good work going out there with, you know, delivering babies and successful cardiac arrest saves and all those things. But we don't always have the information we need to share those success stories. So that's a continued area that we work on. We know that the manual dispatch workflow for some dispatch providers fired, on the fire dispatch side, like Graham Perry, with a manual workflow, that does create some challenges in communication and reporting and getting nine-one-one information across to various agencies. We've mentioned already the flexibility that our program has, and that high variability between three hundred partners, that does create its own set of challenges as well, but it's a challenge that we're committed to working on. And of course, to no one's surprise, the pressure that the EMS system has been under, right, with increased call volumes and which results in an increased workload for our medical first responder partners as well. So that's kind of my level setting, and then I want to get into a little bit about the specifically for online medical control or consultation, which is commonly referred to as OLMC. And in this case, online referring to like a direct phone communication as opposed to virtual. So it's a process that EMS paramedics on the ground and air ambulance in Alberta have access to that is extended to the medical first responders as well. And they can, when they're faced with a situation requiring some advice or information about the best course of action, that those responders can phone the Starslink Center and speak to an EMS referral emergency physician that's on call to consult with them and receive advice on what to do for that patient. So really intended to, for challenging or complex patient situations, and that would include where EMS is prolonged. So it's not a routine workflow, but it is something that is important to be able to phone a friend and get some advice and maybe a bigger, I guess, see the bigger picture of what else is going on in the EMS system in the region before making any decision. That Starslink Center and the discussion with the physician can also bring EMS dispatch in for up-to-date information about where the closest ambulance is, or for instance, if one might be clearing up from the health center nearby, nearby, sometime soon, or whatever else might be going on in the system. So, and that does have the advantage of the calls being recorded as well to the link center. So that's the explanation in brief. And the major initiatives that we have going on right now that would definitely all directly apply to the high level fire department was be, as a result of the Alberta Provincial EMS Advisory Committee, and the report had many recommendations, and a good number of them were related to medical first responders. And one of them was to enhance collaboration with stakeholders to seek input and contribute on process improvements, which is something that we would strive to do anyway. Two specific examples of how we are working on this with groups like high level is the Northwest Alberta MFR Working Group, which we've participated on with Chief Schmidt for a while now, and that's going very well. It's a really good forum for positive engagement and discussion of local issues and information sharing. And then the upcoming Provincial EMS Standing Committee is going to have a medical first responder component as well, and Chief Schmidt has been invited on our behalf to participate in that forum, and we would welcome that. So we also, for the first time, have significant funding available, starting literally this week. So for the first time in eight years, we're able to communicate that we have financial support available that is more significant than has been available in the past. So our Training and Equipment Fund, which we have had since 2015, has been expanded more than like ten times, and it's at one point three-five million as of, was launched for this year in September and then just announced last week to Chief Schmidt. So thirty-six thousand dollars was allocated to High Level Fire Department for this fiscal year. And then the second separate funding stream that does not require application, so it's a direct financial support, starting this month, twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars allocated to High Level Fire. So this isn't designed to cover every dollar that a department may spend, but it is meant to be significant, meaningful, and predictable funding that our agencies and our partners can plan on making use of to support what their needs might be for patient care and responder safety-related initiatives. So that's, in the interest of the time we've got allotted, I think that's what I wanted to cover off, is information points, and then leaving enough time for some further discussion and questions. But first, maybe before we do that, I'll ask Mr. Barone and Dr. Henrichan if they have anything to add to that.
Nothing for me, thanks, Blaine.
Blaine, if I could, can you hear me? I wanted to add the online medical consultation, of which I'm one of thirty physicians in the province who do that. It's not just a call system, and I know that's the terminology that works, but during sixteen hours a day, seven days a week, we're sitting at dispatch in front of a computer with the screen open, the mats open, the patient's electronic medical record open, if we can get that information. And we're really there just to assist you with decision-making with the patients. We do it all day long, and it's really helpful. Fortunately, when COVID came along, we went from about eighteen calls a day to about sixty calls in eight hours. So we actually moved to this full-time model. The other eight hours a day, the physicians are at home because there's not as much call volume. But the same expectation is there, they have their personal computer, electronic medical record in a safe way, that they can pull up maps, all of those other kinds of things. So it really can be a help to the medical first responder to help to share some of the decision-making. We, as a former firefighter, I was with City of Calgary Fire for a while, I get that taking a patient to hospital in a non-ambulance carries some risk, and I want to help you with that risk, help you with, to mitigate that risk, and we're there for that, have been for, we've extended that to MFR probably about two years now, Blaine, I would say, but it's not been well advertised, and I'm here to kind of wave the flag and say, call us. That's what we're here for, waiting, call, what is it, call takers are waiting or something like that, the commercial used to say. Anyway, so anyway, that's my two cents.
So just to be clear, your call line is open twenty-four hours a day?
Yeah, it's the Stars Emergency Link Center, so yeah, they're constantly taking calls for different things that they do, but one of the things they do is they manage the online medical consultation physicians.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question, Counselor?
Hi, Counselor Welke here. So if we were transporting, or our municipalities transporting patients in, I guess we have a fairly specialized medical response vehicle, but it's not a, like a registered ambulance. If we're transporting at all, does our service call this line regardless before transporting?
Yeah, that is definitely the model that we have in place provincially. So the, you know, ideally, MFRs would not have to transport a patient ever. And unfortunately, we know that sometimes it's in the patient's best interest for that decision to be made, with the resources that are available, given the location of the incoming EMS unit and the patient's severity. So we're aware of about ten transports from the high level fire department in the last year and a half or so to the local health center. And previously, there was a similar process that the department was using, but it was phoning a local physician. And what that, I guess, created was just a lack of access to some real-time information about where the closest ambulance was actually coming from and the ability to get some advice from an EMS referral physician. So, you know, with some, we gave that feedback to Chief Schmidt about two or three months ago, and they were happy to switch to the provincial OLMC process. And subsequently, I think there's been two transports since then where this process has been followed, and the decision was made that, yeah, it makes sense in this instance to transport in the fire department vehicle. The reason that we don't call this an MFR transport protocol or something like that is because, you know, to, for a patient to get transported in something that isn't a registered ground ambulance, which is, you know, regulated and has specific legislation around it, is outside the law, right? So we want to make sure that if that decision's getting made, that the group can at least do it by speaking to an EMS physician and coming to an agreement on that course of action.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think to add to that, it's not just the discussion around transport, but it's a discussion on treatment in general, which you'll get from that position. It's not just a yes-no, so hopefully we can add some value.
Any other questions from counsel? Deputy Mayor?
So Rob recently did a presentation at the NAIL meeting, the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders Meeting that was in Valley View, and had a great presentation sort of on the northern region. But he had said at the time that individual statistics for each municipality or health region were available, and I'm just wondering whether he can forward to us exactly what the Northwest or the high level statistics are in terms of response times, waits, how often an ambulance is redeployed from one community to the other, and how many times the community's actually unserved due to the crews being timed out?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I didn't recognize the voice. Who was it? Which Counselor?
Sorry, Counselor Langford.
Hi there. Yes, absolutely, I could get you information specific to the town of high level on call volume, response times, et cetera. So if you gave me, say, to the end of this week, I don't think I need that much time, but definitely by the end of the week, I can have that information to you. Who would you like me to send that to?
To the CAO.
Okay, I could definitely do that.
Thank you.
Counselor Jessman has a question.
Good evening, thank you, Blaine, for that presentation. That was well done, and thank you for taking the time to put that together. I just have a question regarding the transfers. Counselor Welke had mentioned the, or asked about the protocol for transferring with our unit or the town's unit. Has that, what process does that unit go through? Is there a review of what's on board in that with the fire chief? Or do you come and inspect it, or how does that take place?
Framework to set up MFR agencies to do transport, because it's not supported by legislation. Right, so it's not a workflow that's ideal. And sometimes, you know, I'd say high level is lucky in the situation that they have an ambulance-type vehicle that they can move the patient to if they're outdoors and have them have somewhere keep warm. And then if they do need to transport, it's, you know, a reasonable way to do that. Sometimes there, that transport is taking place in a police car or a fire truck, like a pump. So it's not a situation that we consider routine, and there is no, you know, safety procedure, legislation, or other kind of framework to say, this is what has to be in place in order for you to do it, besides having a registered ground ambulance.
Thank you.
Hi, Blaine, it's Crystal. I just have a question on the funding. Like you said, thirty-six thousand and change to the high level fire department, and then twenty-one hundred, so, or twenty-one thousand? So is this money directly for medical supplies?
It's, it's for, well, the direct compensation can be used however the department feels is needed to help offset some of the direct costs of doing medical first response activity.
Okay.
So we know that there's expenses related to vehicles and people's time and, you know, diesel and all those things. And then there's also the medical aspect of, you know, training and certifications and, you know, gloves and protective equipment and all those things. So really, it can be applied to anything that is patient care or responder safety-related, is the intent of those funds. So the Training and Equipment Fund is more of a project-based application that's done every year. And this year is thirty-six thousand. And that was to address some medical training priorities that the chief had shared, and appreciating the remote location of high level that we know it can be, you know, be added expenses to get training delivered locally, so, or access to training. And then the other one, the other stream of funding is the direct compensation, and that does not require an application. That will be administered, it will be dispersed automatically from this year going forward. And that's a total of fifty-seven thousand and change for this year. And we intend to pay all of that out to high level before March thirty-first of this year. And then there'll be another opportunity for the Training and Equipment Fund and the direct compensation in the first one or two quarters of the fiscal year coming up. So essentially, you're going to get four funding envelopes back to back to back to back. And then it'll be a little more even keel after that.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any other questions from counsel? Well, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very informative. And have a good rest of your evening. Sorry you couldn't see how good-looking we all are.
Absolutely. Thanks for your time, and happy to answer any questions by email or through Chief Schmidt if anything else comes up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Take care. We're not good, or I'm not good-looking anyway. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Have a good evening. All right, so the next one is the Town of High Level Wildfire Mitigation Strategy.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Murray's only able to join by Zoom, so we're going to call him now. Hello, Marie, are you there?
Yeah, how are you today?
Good, we can hear you, we can't see you yet, and we don't think you're going to be able to see us.
Can you see?
Oh, can see you now.
We're not so worried about us so much as the presentation that we have.
Well, we can see a bit of it.
There you go. Now your camera's on. Oh, now your camera's off. It was on, and then it was off again. There you go. Now you should be seeing us. Oh, now it's off again.
No, we can see you, so, yeah, we're having trouble with our internal camera. And can you see the presentation?
Yes, if it begins with the Town of High Level Wildfire Mitigation Strategy.
That's the one.
It sure does.
Hi, Murray, it's Crystal McAtier, and I...
Hi there, how are you?
Good, good. I see that you can't see us, but we have our entire counsel here.
Okay.
So welcome.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be back in, with high level.
Kind of. So you can go ahead if you want.
Okay, sounds good. So I guess the first thing I want to just talk about is the great news. It looks like high level is going to be one degree on Sunday. So I think that's going to be a lot better than, than you've had weather-wise for the last few weeks. Which brings us somehow to, to the upcoming fire season and the wildfire threat for high level. So this project was completed by myself and Pat Golick. We're the Palisade team. And the picture you see there, actually you can see in the foreground is your home hardware with quite a column behind it from the Chuck Aig Fire. As I'm going through, if you have any questions, just call her. It's not a worry, okay?
All right, thank you.
So the stakeholders for this project, of course, the town at high level and the staff with the town. The Town of High Level Fire Department, of course, has been a big driver of the project. The high level forest area, you know, they've had such a busy year this year. So, you know, we had limited opportunities to talk to the folks, but we have over the last few weeks as things start to settle down. You know, it's kind of difficult when your fire season starts to stretch into October. This project was done by the Town of High Level and it was funded entirely by funds from FRIA, which is the Alberta, or sorry, the Forest Resource Industries Association of Alberta. So they looked after all the costs for the program. And there's two, two outcomes that we, that we have here. The first one is a wildfire preparedness guide. During Chuck Aig Fire, every fire truck and every responder had a preparedness guide on their dash. It's, it's something where we can give the information that mercy responders need in order to respond. We do it in eleven by seventeen plasticized format. The chief has a little swack of those on the way to him as we speak. So for the, the project, we included the lands which are proposed to be annexed from, from the, from the county. This is what the guide looks like. I'm not going to dive into it. But really what it does is it tells us what is the values at risk, what we have to look out for. Some strategy and tactics. And we use a lot of water. So we put water information, fuels information, some radio and some evacuation information as well. One of the things that the guys find very helpful is a, is a good map. When we do these maps, they are geo-referenced. So the responders can, can see the map and see where they are on their phones. The next step was the wildfire mitigation strategy, and this is the big document. We're going to just give you a really, really thumbnail sketch of it. It's well over a hundred pages and we condensed it into, into the thirty-five thousand foot level. I understand that you have copies available and I'm sure that the chief will be able to provide you with, with the full document if you don't have it. So what we're trying to do is to recommend ways to mitigate the risk and the consequences of wildfire in and around high level. What we hope to have at the end is a guide for both the town and forestry to implement fire smart initiatives within the community. And the thing we always have to be cognizant about is we need to retain or enhance the forest environment. You know, people live in your town, it's a community, and we want to make sure that it, it remains environmentally acceptable to everybody. So our objectives, we looked at the hazards that we found within, within the area. We looked at fuel management. And we heard site hazard assessments. Pat's going to touch on those in a bit. We looked at the things that could be done for future fire smart actions. And just again, another note, we did include the proposed annexation. So what the components of the strategy are, there's the, the components, the assessment, vegetation, development, legislation, public education, interagency cooperation and mercy planning. So really to, to, to become a fire smart community, we need to look at all of the aspects of fire smart. So the planned area is the Town of High Level as it exists today. And that is in red. And the yellow is the outline of the proposed annexed area. So the area around the water treatment area. And there's that, I call it a land bridge up to the airport. And then of course we've added in the airport and the fire center and the cottonwood subdivision at forestry. It was interesting looking at fire history in the area. And I think that the important number is the average of thirty-three fires per year in the town, in the Town of High Level region. Most of them are happening during the springtime. So, you know, human caused fires between two thousand and six and two thousand and one was three hundred and fourteen. So it is substantial. You have major historical wildfires in the region and I think that a lot of you have been around during those fires. And Chuck Aig Creek, of course, and it changed the environment dramatically. And I'm going to show you a, a quick picture of what that looks like. Fire spread in these, in these large fires was generally to the northwest. So there you can see the wildfire locations between two thousand and six and two thousand and twenty-one. Because they are mostly man caused, that's the red triangle. You can see that they are clustered around the roads and around settlement. The lightning fires seem to be, you know, for the most part, pretty well distributed throughout the entire area. The, the fuels that we have found in, in round high level, it's mostly aspen and grass. However, by the industrial area, the rodeo grounds, there are some isolated continuous coniferous fuels. A lot of the fuels that's around the town have, of course, you guys are all familiar with, you know, the willow and the grass areas to the north. The problem is they become very, very flammable during the spring. The other thing that's important to note is that because we do have a lot of aspen stands, deciduous stands, they are transitioning to mixed wood fuels as the coniferous trees, the spruce trees grow in underneath. The other part of fuels, the twenty nineteen fire card has re-vegetated to a lot of grass fuels. And of course, fire will spread through there very quickly. But the good news is, is that it becomes a great barrier for fire spread. And it's really easy to put a, you know, put a D six down that line and, and move all that grass over the way in front of harm's way. There are scattered pockets of conifers throughout the planting area. You know, they're, they're not very large, but they are there. So the Chuck Aig Creek Fire had a positive impact on the wildland fuels because it, it got rid of all those coniferous fuels, those mixed wood fuels, and has replaced it with grass fuels. So there's what the area around high level looks like. And you can see it now in, in yellow to the, to the west and to the south of the town. And that is the outline really of the Chuck Aig Creek Fire. And all those fuels, which used to be similar to the rest, have now transitioned entirely to grass. The fuels to look out for are the greens, those are coniferous fuels. But you can see the most part around the town is, is aspen, which is kind of the dark brown. So in the springtime around high level, this is what it looks like. We have a moderate fire hazard. And the reason why it's moderate is it's in those dry grass fuels. Just take a note of the fuels that are to the north, those pinks where we would have extreme fire behavior. And those are the coniferous fuels that still exist. And then in, in the summertime, the, the leaves come out and the grass turns green. And the fire hazard around high level dips down to low. Just simply as, as a result of the environment around the town. The area to the north, the reds, it's decreased some, but it is still into the very higher hazard. And the wind speed direction, wind speed, of course, is the, the, the driver of, of the direction that, of fire spread and the rate of fire spread. And those southeast winds that you experienced during Chuck Aig Creek Fire certainly showed up on the, on this wind rose. So a lot of the spring winds are southeast. And in the summertime, it's, it transitions more to winds from the north. I'm going to turn it over to Pat and she's going to talk about wildfire threat and, and home assessments.
Hey, thank you. So as, as Murray's mentioned, the, the greatest threat that, that there will be within the town is in the spring when the grass is dry and, and ready to burn. There's also potential for wildfires and isolated coniferous fuels. But the risk to most of the residential properties is low. But the issue is, and, and I'm sure people are familiar with this, is when the coniferous and mixed wood fuels, if they, if they do ignite, then they can produce embers which, which can travel into the town. So as Murray's already mentioned, deciduous stands, and we're finding this throughout the north, is that the, the inventory data and the modeling data that are being used are a little bit out of date in that many of the deciduous stands are now, they've got spruce trees growing underneath of the deciduous, which used to not be really visible, but they're, they're getting bigger now. And there's, there's more coniferous fuels than, than what, what you might think. Continuous coniferous fuels are, are quite a big threat to adjacent properties. And we do see that up by the, the fire center. And the largest risk for homes isn't always the actual fire, but embers falling onto flammable materials like wood piles into the dry grass on the roof, that kind of thing. So we did, to do the site assessments, we did area, area assessments. And we divided the, the town and the annexed area into, into five different planning units. Number one being the airport, as you can see, two is the hospital area, three is the rodeo grounds and light industrial, four is Canadian Tire and Toco, and five is the, is the urban area. So we'll go through those, we went through those one by one and assigned, assigned values to all of them. Okay, so we looked at, generally in the areas, we looked at roofing materials and roof cleanliness, basically how the dwellings were built. What were people storing in their yards? Were the, were the decks skirted or not? What was the adjacent forest vegetation? What was the surface vegetation? And what other kind of fuels were in the area? So these are, these are general looks at those five units. So what we came up with was up by the airport, as you would expect, there's, the structure and site assessment shows that the, the risk is low to extreme. That is due to the coniferous fuels that are right adjacent to all, all the houses and the, and the fire center. And this makes the area assessment a moderate. Elsewhere in the, the urban areas and the light industrial, rodeo, hospital, the, the structure and site assessments were low and the area assessments were low as well. So mitigation, what do we do about this? We are somewhat switching our focus now, trying to put more of an onus on the homeowners. And homeowners need to, need to recognize what's going on in their own property and to take actions themselves. They cannot expect that, that the town is going to make their property fireproof. So to that end, an aggressive public education campaign is, is what we're recommending. Get homeowners to look around, to, to move their wood pile from right beside the house, away from the house, to trim up the trees, to, to move the flammable vegetation away from their house. To, to manage the vegetation around their property and to, to learn how to use equipment more, more safely. And, and buy equipment that's quads and that kind of things when they are out in the forest. So we, for mitigation, that we're recommending that you consider some fuel modification projects in areas that have been identified, and I'll go through those in a bit. Encourage the utility providers to make sure that their, their power lines are, are tree free. And that's been a, historically been a, a big thing. A tree on a power line can, can really cause a lot of problems. And continue to manage the grass around residential properties. Regularly mow the rights aways and open spaces. And, and maintain the vegetation on the fire guards. So high level has a nice fire guard around it now as a result of the Chuck Aig Creek Fire. It's been seeded to species that are easy to maintain and, and hardy. And they're not going to grow really tall, but they do need to be mowed once or twice a year. And emphasize fire smart actions for vulnerable homes. Again, get the landowners to take some responsibility for their own properties. So where we're recommending some fuel modification is up by the, by the forestry office. And I've outlined it there, it's three point six hectares. There's a lot of pine trees, they are right up against the houses. There needs to be a, some kind of a, some kind of a treatment up there. And the other areas, again, just expanding the fuel break a bit, the existing one behind the, at the north side of town. And a little bit of adjacent work behind the, what's the Canford Park, I think? Another two hectares. And then along Highway thirty-five, mostly on the old route where it used to come into town, there's still some conifer there that is quite thick. It's got, it's got a lot of down and dead in there as well as the, the standing timber. And there's, there's a potential for fires to, to get, get going in there and cause some problems for town. As far as development, we're recommending that future development should consider the water supply standards within the, the Fire Smart Manual and the NFPA. And, and the NFPA deals with more rural things where you don't have a municipal water system. And it's, it talks about dry hydrants and, and, and things like that. And that would, that would apply more up in the, in the airport area. When, again, with new developments, make sure that route standards have minimum guidelines, that the, the roads are wide enough, there's room for, for emergency vehicles to turn around. Power should be underground. It's just, it's just works better and the, the trees don't, don't fall on power lines and, and start fires. And the tree parks and municipal reserves need to be maintained. You know, to be, they need to be looked at with an eye to, to the potential for flammability, to prune, prune the bottom layers, maybe thin out the trees and make sure the grass is mowed. To, um, prune, prune the bottom layers, maybe thin out the trees and make sure the grass is mowed. As far as legislation goes, um, the, um, municipal development plan, all the planning documents, your, you, High Level has done a really good job. Yours are, your documents as they sit right now are, are very well done. Um, we're recommending that a wildfire risk assessment be required, um, in hazardous areas. And you may want to look at, uh, Fire Smart exterior building materials and landscaping that they be required in new developments. Uh, skirt the decks. And, um, in, again, in new dwellings, and, and this again is part of the thing that the landowners should be taking ownership of, but the town may have a role to play as well, is to require a fuel-free area in the median zone around all new dwellings. And that is 1.5 meters from the house. There should be nothing there that can burn. Um, public education, as I said, it's, we need to get the landowners on board. Um, everybody needs to work together. It's, it's land use planners, government, industry, everybody. Um, everybody needs to be aware of, of Fire Smart, be aware of what they can do to protect their property and, and their community. And interrupt agency cooperation and cross-training. Again, High Level is doing really well with this. Um, you need to know what the other, what the other agencies are capable of, what their equipment is, what they can do. And, um, High Level's doing very well. Um, we've got hazard and resource information exchanging, equipment sharing, communications, cross-training. All this is, uh, is part of everybody coming together in the event of a, of a large fire. Um, again, a continuation of the emergency response planning. I think Murray can probably speak to this better, better than me. But, um, you know, High Level has, has, uh, mutual aid agreements. Um, we are well aware of the impact of major emergencies, uh, the multi-organizational, multi-jurisdictional efforts. And, um, because of the planning that you've done in the past and because of your experience, um, it just needs to continue. Uh, so as far as we go, thank you. Thank you for, to Rodney Schmidt for, uh, his help. The Forestry Division, as always, you have an awesome staff at the Forestry Division in, in, uh, at Fortnur there. Um, everybody knows that wildfires have had a dramatic impact on the town already. And, um, and we thank you for your resilience and your, your commitment to, uh, to looking at this again and to, to learning and to moving forward with a fire smart planning. The solutions are yours to implement. Thank you.
That's all we got, folks.
Deputy Mayor has questions.
So thanks for your report. Um, very interesting. Um, we're always, um, sort of protective of the information about the town. Um, the population information's out of date. Um, you're out by six hundred ninety-nine. I think the last census added has had us at, uh, thirty-nine ninety-two. And the trading area, I've heard anywhere from twenty-seven thousand to thirty-five thousand. I'm not sure what the current estimate is. Perhaps the C A O knows.
I think Murray's estimate is between thirty, twenty-eight and thirty-two. Uh, Alberta Health Services, their catchment area is thirty-six.
Okay.
Uh, thirty-nine twenty-two is, uh, was the twenty-twenty-one census.
Thirty-nine twenty-two, okay.
Have a question.
Uh, good evening, uh, Pat and Murray. Uh, uh, thanks for the presentation. Very well done. It, it's a question regarding, uh, comment made and one that kind of worries me as a area, uh, wildfire manager, uh, is the traditional modeling tools that we use. And the current drought codes that we find ourselves in, we all know that our wildfires are becoming more and more extreme. I'm just wondering what's out there. Uh, I know with our organization, with cuts over the last number of years, we would like to focus more in, in coming up with newer and better information regarding modeling tools and stuff. But, uh, like I say, with the shortages, it's, it's difficult. I was just wondering what you have at your resources as far as consulting, consultants, as far as looking at the new world that we live in with droughts and extreme conditions that we're living in? And how do you adjust your traditional, uh, planning standards and tools?
Um, I think that, that what we, what we have here is, um, we're, we're dealing with the same information that the province has and the, the same programs and whatnot. And I think that, that everybody is playing a bit of, of catch-up with it. And the, the reason for that being that, that in years past, the, uh, the province had a great uh, deal of, of resources to put into forest inventory and to maintaining the, the base data on, on what the forest looked like and what is out there. And over time, they have shifted that responsibility to, um, to industry. And if you're looking at land in an area that's not being actively managed by industry or, or logged by industry, then the data are somewhat lacking. And that's what we're finding in areas that have been previously, previously looked at um, by the province, but not updated. And so that's where I say that where we, where, where some of the data show that it's, it's deciduous, that in fact, we go there and, and a lot of times, we're looking at more of a mixed wood stand, um, trending towards, um, coniferous dominant. And then as far as the actual models go, they are, they are working fairly well. However, we seem to be getting to the maximum of what we model quicker. And, and that's where there's, there's current research going on, try, at universities, trying to adjust models to, to account for the conditions that we're seeing now that do seem to be more extreme than what we've had in the past.
Thank you.
I don't know if that really answered you. I don't know if that made you feel any better, but it's, the work is going on, I guess.
Yeah, that's probably one of my biggest concerns is the current state that we're in. And, and I'm, I'm not putting the blame on anybody. It's just the current status and, and place that we find ourselves in history with shortage of staff and, and being caught up so quickly with the extreme changes. Like twenty nineteen, uh, to now, uh, our, our current conditions as far as drought is beyond anything we've seen in the area for a very long time. So, and last year, the, our modeling just could not keep up with the behavior of wildfire. Didn't even come close to it. So it is quite concerning and, you know, um, I definitely keep an eye on that. And I know, uh, Chief Schmidt as well, uh, that we, we have this program and we have the predictions. But, uh, we always want to be, you know, going and keeping an eye on that we're, we're better prepared than we've ever been to meet the challenges that we may come up against. So, thank you.
Well, and I, I, I do believe that in your case, where you do have the experience of, of having a large fire and you have, um, uh, quite a stable forestry staff and, and, and town staff as well. So you have a lot of people there with, who are experienced in dealing with this and that makes a huge, huge difference. Um, it, it, it can't, it can't be overstated how, how important that is to have people who have seen this kind of thing before and who, who know how to respond.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, I read your document and it was very informative. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the January eighth council meeting. Uh, minutes, does, uh, someone want to move those if there's no errors, please? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried. We also have the January fifteenth committee of whole. Are there any errors? Could I have a mover?
All move the minutes from the committee of the whole.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. I'll start being like, like, just saying. All right.
We're starting from the outside in.
Yeah. Um, you have my report. Um, if there's any questions, I will answer them.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, where's all this, uh, I don't have your report. Here it is. Where is all this, um, contaminated soil coming from?
Fama.
Oh.
Paramount. And yeah, it's a hundred and fi- approximately a hundred and five thousand loads and it's going to take them from now till October to haul it and it, tons, sorry. And it's going into our contaminated cell that we just had built this summer. And yeah.
We may need another one?
Yeah, probably.
So does it just sit then there to, what's the process?
Well, it's in a, it's in a cell that's lined.
Mm-hmm.
So it goes into that cell and once the cell's full, then they cover it and.
And it just.
Grow mountain.
Gotcha.
I thought they would turn it and stuff too, but since I joined the landfill, no, they don't do that.
They seal it off?
Seal it off.
Okay. Interesting.
Three million dollars worth of dirt. Anything else? Uh, could I have someone move my report then, please?
I'll move your report now, Mary.
All in favor? Oh, I skipped the delegation business. I know you guys were looking at me. Okay, back up this bus. Um, could I have someone move the Alberta Health Services presentation, please? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. Could someone please move to accept the, um, Town of High Level Wildlife mitigation, wildfire? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried. Now we'll go on to my report, which Counselor Welkey, move, could I have a sec, or, uh, all in favor, please? Yeah. Okay, council committee, deputy mayor.
Um, January the ninth, attended the, um, Kenzie Waste, uh, Management Commission Board Meeting. Um, January sixteenth, attended the Upper Hay Regional Forest Public Advisory Committee. And on January seventeenth, attended the ready board meeting.
Any questions for deputy mayor? All in favor? Whoops, that's okay. We'll just go on to Counselor Anderson's. Sorry, I'll get with it. Counselor Anderson.
On January tenth, I attended the Golden Ring Society's meeting. And that's all the committees I've been on here lately.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jessman?
I have nothing to report.
I have, uh, um, something, uh, that I'd like to note and maybe it's only me. I did not know about the, the opening. I failed to watch or go on to Facebook. And I didn't know anything about our, um, opening for forestry capital happening at our skateboard, or at our skate path. So is there a way besides, uh?
Well, there's going to be a website designed and everything's going to be on there. So you'll be able to get updates on that. You'll have to stay in tune with it as you move forward if you're not on Facebook.
How do I stay in tune?
Well, we'll, we'll get to that. I'll get to that information.
Madam Mayor, we can, we can reach out to that committee and make sure it's on our events calendar as well.
Okay.
It's there, it's there now.
I think that it was planned after the last one, so it didn't make it on there. Um, but it will definitely be going forward, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe when we, yeah, well, we'll get that additional information, so yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
On, uh, January sixteenth, I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting. Um, just discussed, um, plans for the year and we have another meeting tomorrow night to get, uh, started on everything. So I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Le- Librian?
The only thing I have to report is I started the, um, Assessment Review Board Training today, uh, which will be for the next week. That's all I have to report.
Good luck. Counselor Welkey?
On January sixteenth, I attended our first Northwest Region F A S D, uh, board meeting of the year. And it's just a lot of catch-up. Um, just report, uh, for council, the status of the new slash old building that had been transferred over there. Still has not been put to use. We had applied for some funding, like a grant, uh, matched grant last year to get it fully renovated. It's, it's heated and plumbed, but not usable and not insured for use at the moment. Um, but, uh, the funding had, the, uh, grant request was not successful last year. Uh, we're trying to, uh, again this year, and we've also put together a building committee to better, uh, deal with moving forward with that building. So, um, and that's all I have to report.
So what funding were you applying for?
It was a, it was a matched, I can't remember the name of the grant, but it was a matched grant, uh, by the government. And I believe that the costs were too high and it was felt that it would be difficult at that time for our own society to come up with that amount. So we're looking at different strategies of even, uh, lower, um, I guess, efforts to, to renovate it, just to get it into a usable state so it can be used for, you know, F A S D programming, so.
So is all that funding gone, like to, was it all used up to buy the, um, ADAC or that, that property that they're on? Cause didn't they get three million from the government for?
I don't know the history of that original.
Before Frank left.
Yeah, that original funding. Um, there's, there's no concerns with the operational budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just, um, allocating, um, resources. Like I think, like we have a, we have a, a good amount to put towards that building, but, um, but not to the extent that the quotes came in last year, even to match. So, uh, we're just going to, you know, decrease that a little bit and actually, um, have a subcommittee basically dedicated to, um, moving that project forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, could I have someone move all the council reports, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Council action list, is there any questions? I have a question about the multipurpose scenes that we ended up on, on infrastructure. Do we have our design for our second? Have they finished that or?
Yeah, the design was presented to council in December. Uh, the cost consultants are, will be here to meet with council on the twelfth of February at your next regular meeting.
Okay, because when I had my meeting with the M L A, he had asked that we, once we had that new design, to forward that to him?
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, you'll have more, the, they'll have the detail on that design as well once the cost consultants are here.
Okay. And have you heard anything about our design?
Uh, just the, the architect is working with the cost consultant. So the design that was presented with, so you, the council approved that, uh, sort of phased approach. So what the cost consultants will do is they'll go out and they'll work with, um, a lot, we're using Gen Call Construction. So Gen Call's got a lot of experience up here. So they'll work with other, they'll look at pre-manufactured, uh, prefabricated buildings, that type of stuff, and try to come up with the best price and the best options for this climate.
Uh, no, what I was referring to was, did you talk to, uh, anybody with the government about our infrastructure project? How it ended up there? about our infrastructure project? How it ended up there?
No, that, we have no idea.
Oh, I thought you were going to talk to Michael.
No, I didn't get a chance this week. He got tied up with the Minister of Education, but I'll see him tomorrow. Uh, I'm just guessing, Madam Mayor, it was our presentation with the, the Minister of Infrastructure back at the conference that prompted that.
This is for administration. Um, is there any update on the audit or?
Um, it, some of that I wouldn't mind discussing in camera.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, it, it is still in the works.
Okay. Um, next question. Have you heard anything else from Powerwoods as we last discussed?
Um, they, my understanding is they're still waiting on CN for their siding, uh, permit. Um, and actually, Madam Mayor, one of the suggestions that was given is perhaps we could talk to Brent, um, uh, that you work with on the-
Oh, is he?
Yeah. And see if maybe he's got some-
I actually have a meeting with him tomorrow.
Okay. If you, if you want, I'll get some information to you on the Powerwood situation and maybe it's something he can just put some feelers out for.
Yeah, just send it. I have a meeting with him at eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty? Good.
And then just last one here. I was just curious why, um, in the Council Action List, the two, uh, letters of apology were, were added in there considering those are in-camera items?
Um, those were, both of those were motions that were passed out of camera and they've been brought back up by council. So, that's why they're added back to the-
We didn't discuss it last week like we were supposed to in camera. We're supposed to discuss it tonight.
No, no motions on both of those issues. It's been passed by council out of camera in regular meetings.
Okay, the last one, sorry. I thought we, we had, I see, but, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Jessman?
Uh, two questions. Uh, back under the, under the, uh, center. So, I'm, I'm just thinking, wha- so, we'll wait to hear from Michael. Michael's going to look into it. Do you, it, or have you asked him? You haven't talked to him, I guess, regarding the posting with the government and that?
No, I'm, I'd, to be very honest, I think they have parts of infrastructure that actually goes looking for, uh, major projects. It doesn't have to be anything to do with the government, though they post a lot of their own on there. But, we can find out for certain. I'm, I'm sure there's a contact there that would know. But, um, I mean, we've made extensive contact with the government over this project. So.
I'm just, the reason being is I, I think it's, there's a lot of, uh, back, background, uh, discussions and stuff regarding current drought conditions, uh, wildfire situations, uh, all that is going on federally, provincially. I know our, our minister's getting challenged on a regular basis and, and is being called to task, so is municipal affairs. So, there's a lot of, uh, discussion, uh, going on and, and thinking it's probably the perfect time, uh, to strike when the iron's hot. And I feel, or I'm afraid if we miss this, that we may, you know, uh, there may be, you know, maybe a rainy summer or something come along and everybody forgets about it. So, that's, I just wanted to kind of see if we're going to, uh, pick up, uh, maybe and move the ball a little, little more on this at this current time, just the situation. And Michael might be able to help us on that.
Yeah, I, I'll talk to him tomorrow about it.
Yeah.
Something that we might consider that we kind of, we didn't toss around, but I mean, that we started with was to go back to our task force so that they can do some of the work for us because of our limited staff. So, this might be something that council wishes to move forward with, forming that group back together. And, uh, like Terry says, our projects up on infrastructure on the Alberta website and the Minister of Addictions asked me to forward our new concept. So, there must be interest in it and it's good to keep that interest going. And if we had a group of people together that can advocate instead of just the Town of High Level, maybe it would move faster. Counselor Welkey?
Um, I was thinking about that and the reasons why we're seeing that up on that, um, major project site too is, um, possibly the, uh, the, the project is there to, to spark discussion and feedback from stakeholders and from the province and to see, you know, basically what the feeling is. You know, if people are asking, you know, and looking at the major projects that Alberta's doing, they might see that project and then, you know, be asking or, or just, you know, just testing to, to see, you know, the positive and negative feedback, say, for funding a project of that nature. So, like Counselor Jessman said, it's, it's probably perfect timing to continue to feed that conversation. Cause I think that maybe, you know, would be what their, what the government would be looking for, like looking to see if, if people are commenting favorably or not favorably on certain projects that they're thinking of doing. So, yeah, it would be, uh, it would be perfect timing. The, uh, the visibility is, is increased-
Mm-hmm.
-for, for the entire province and federally. So.
Yes, sir.
Just a second, uh, question. Any, any word or any noise in the system regarding annexation of where we're at with that? Are we still just waiting for the process to play out?
Uh, we have presented the town's position. We did that back before Christmas.
Yeah.
County presented theirs on Friday. Their submission to the Land and Property Rights Tribunal was six hundred and ninety-three pages long. Um, we're preparing our counter-response, uh, which we'll do and we need to have in here within the next couple of weeks. Uh, Gwendolyn, um, Stuart Palmer and Kathleen Lake-Effleton will be joining you on February the twelfth in camera to discuss, um, the town's position because we are, uh, in Edmonton for the hearing the next Tuesday on the twentieth.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions on the auction list, upcoming events list?
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, just on the, in, in, in my, maybe that's better for my report. I was just wondering with McKenzie Waste Management, has there been any discussion on how that group is moving forward with the Extended Producer Responsibility?
I haven't heard anything.
I did talk to Jennifer before Christmas and that's why we put the applications in to register the Town of High Level for that recycling program. But, I was just wondering if the commission had heard anything yet.
Yeah, I was, I had a question here. I see that you have that in your report and we had not, I, of course, hadn't heard anything, but I didn't know whether the Deputy Mayor had or not.
That was, there's, it was some deadlines. It was the thirty-first was the deadline.
Yeah.
My understanding is, is that the, uh, the board has each of the problems on multiple occasions in terms of setting up recycling and they've been told that more than half of the year. Okay. Because of shipping costs, et cetera. So, the, the board is looking at different alternatives for some items in terms of, um, shredding and things like that, you know, um, but there's no, there's no consolidated plan, at least in the works, to, uh, do any significant recycling.
Okay.
But this is, this is different than just recycling?
I know, the producer responsibility, but in terms of what's used here and, and what can be recycled, you're just limited off.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, I just wanted to know if the commission had had a chance to, what they have. Thank you.
Okay, could I have someone accept the auction list, please, then? Counselor Librian, all in favor? Carried. Uh, events list? Deputy Mayor? And then, the monthly report, was there anything-
Are we?
Monthly report?
Um, are we voting on accepting the-
All in favor of upcoming events? Carried. Um, is there anything in the, uh, report from administration? So, Mark has resigned. Yeah.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, yes. Mark's got a full-time job with the Amherst Police Department.
Mm, good for him. All right. Counselor Lambert?
Um, at our chamber meeting, Aluk actually joined us and he had mentioned the rural and real stream wasn't, not approved yet, but I had understood at our last council meeting it was approved.
Um, if I'm, I'm, Madam Mayor, can we move that conversation in camera? I'll just draw it down here.
All right. Could I have someone move the monthly report then? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried. Request for decision from Tetra Tech, that was?
That was from your, uh, Committee of the Hall. Um, administrations made, based on council's discussion, there's the two alternatives to accept the, uh, the project as presented or to accept the project with the option of sore, uh, pedestrian crossings. Um, and that would be put in the tender as an option. Um.
So, if we put, if we go with alternative one, which is the wired lights and everything, if this comes in way over budget, we have the option of taking out things?
Yeah, we don't have to accept any, any necess- any tender and if it comes in way over budget, we'll be bringing it back to council for review.
Okay. I think Boyd is going to do that. Yeah. All in favor? Carried. Sorry, that's the one thing I remember. Um, the next one is the Council Code of Conduct and that requires three readings and you'll all be happy to know that I've decided this won't be my hill to die on. So, could I ask someone for the first reading, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Uh, move second reading, please?
I'll move second reading.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Uh, could I have, um, someone move for unanimous consent? Whether it's, what?
I'm, uh, sorry, I have no idea how to answer that question. I'm sure Deputy Mayor-
I think we're still moving three all at once.
Yeah.
I'm not going to vote against it. So. All in favor? Carried. And third and final reading?
I'll move third and final reading.
All in favor? Carried.
Maybe you're going to try and move third and final reading.
I just said it wasn't my hill to die on. All right, uh, new business, um, community, uh, promotion task force appointments.
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, the municipal clerk will present that out.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, first of all, I have to apologize to you. I did forget something in this request for decision. You only have the citizen appointments here. We do require two members of council to be appointed. So, I'd just like to amend that so that we include that. Um, we sent out letters to the hotel accommodation industry and the restaurant industry on December nineteenth, asking them if anybody would like to be part of this task force. We did receive an answer. We have, um, the first one here, Perry Felsinger, had indicated his interest. You have his email there. Uh, I also touched base with the Chamber of Commerce. As one member should be from the chamber. They have put forward Adam Kent's name. And lastly, from the restaurant industry, we confirmed with Sherry Matthews that she would like to be appointed. And those are all the citizen appointments we're recommending this evening.
Does somebody want to make that motion? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carried. Do you want to appoint the two counselors? Who would like to sit on that task force? Counselor Lambert, Counselor Librian? Um, does somebody want to make that motion? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried.
Madam Mayor, just for the committee's information, uh, Director Clark will take the lead, administrative lead on that committee.
Okay. So, the correspondence for information? Could I have someone move that for information? Oh, um, just in case, just before, sorry, I just, I had a note here that, um, in order to, um, do that policing advisory board report, did you read? It takes about thirty minutes to fill it out. So, if anybody's interested in doing this, that's how long it is. It's setting up for their government. Kate, who, you want? Counselor Jessman made the motion to accept it. You own it. All in favor? Carried. And moving on to, no questions? Could I have a motion? This ends our public portion for this evening. So, thank you for joining us. Have a good evening. Could I have someone move us in camera, please?
I will.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Yes.